And welcome. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Monday, March 5th. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Decanter?
Here.
Mr. Cole? Mr. Mannan?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Mr. Hawkeizer?
Here.
Mr. Riden?
Here.
And Mr. Scallan?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We thought in light of everything that is happening in Florida and in our world that there has been a lot of conversations in our community about school safety and thought it was appropriate at this point to have an open conversation about school safety and have invited our Marshal, Mark Murray, here. If you would please come forward. And our stellar school resource officer, Megan Tierney, to be part of the conversation. You can sit on opposite sides. Susan, our superintendent, really wanted to be here tonight, but unfortunately she's sick with the flu and I think it's best that she not be here if she's sick with the flu. So anyway, what I'd like to suggest is that if we could start, Mark and Megan, if you could just talk a little bit about what happens at the school, the monthly meetings, the relationship with the DA's office, the different trainings that have happened, and just give sort of an overview of the relationship with the schools, regarding school safety and the police department, and then we can open it up for specific questions.
Okay, I'll start. I'll let Megan speak internally in the school.
Sure, yes.
As far as our police department and our training, all our officers have attended the active shooter training. It's done over in Merrimack. Eric Shears, Chief Shears from Merrimack Police, he's got a great contact with a company out of Texas. It's their active shooter training company. It's called Alert Training.
It's called what?
Alert.
Alert, okay. Just want to be sure everyone can hear you.
Yep. So he's trained to several offices in the area, some departments in his new report. I think Salisbury's been through it. And all our offices have been through that. Basically, it's our response when we're going to show up at the school, what we're going to do when we come into the school and obviously outside the school. And part of that training is we need to know what the school's doing inside. So that part is, are we doing Alice, are we doing, you know, the run hide fight, you know, what is it we're doing inside? Along with that type of training, we're incorporating the firefighters and the emergency responders while we go in that while we're either encountering the active shooter, they're coming in behind us and they're removing any victims that are happening here. So that goes along with the training also. And I think that's coming up next month, that some of the firefighters are going to participate in that as well. So, as far as internally in the school, Meg, you can talk about.
So I'm currently on an administrative schedule, so Monday through Friday, we handle every call that requires police assistance and then a bunch of calls that don't require necessarily police assistance, but could be aided by an officer's opinion. We lean heavily on the memorandum of understanding, which is signed by the Chief, Marshal Murray, and then the superintendent, which allows us to share information that typically we wouldn't share, but when it pertains to school safety are allowed to sort of use back and forth. It helps us sort of develop a bigger picture with a little bit more, a broader view of what's going on. So, an issue that could rise to the level of school safety is then explored not only by the administration, but also by the police. That way we can work hand in hand. And as you mentioned, Mayor, there's quarterly meetings that we have with the district attorney's office, and those meetings are collaborative, so we get a little picture of, you know, an issue might arise in school, it may become a chargeable offense that the police then take on and then proceeds through the court system. We can use different tools that the court can offer, like the diversion program, which often lends itself to kids who have found themselves in possession of alcohol, underage, things like that. Anything that can remediate before they actually see a technical criminal charge. Outside of that, we can follow a case or a problematic student that has seen multiple incidents through. That way it's not, it never, it doesn't just go from the school and get plopped into the police's lap and then end up in court, and then we don't really have any follow-through. We're able to sort of see all aspects of it all the way through.
Megan, could you talk a little bit about that? I had fielded several emails from parents following the shooting in Florida about how do we work with kids, how do we identify kids who might be at risk, how do we, you know, could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah.
And your relationship with the principals in each of the school buildings?
Right. So in police work, they always say to try to avoid working off of a hunch, you need reasonable suspicion or probable cause in order to effect an arrest. For us, I think, working with the leadership teams in the schools, we do sort of work off of a hunch, and in a sense, a student might have some behavior that becomes concerning, and over time, we can continue to meet them on a basis that, it's nice that we have a school resource officer, because it might start at the Brezner Hand and follow them through the other schools. And by the time we get to the high school, we've developed a really good assessment of what that kid's life looked like prior to the incident that might generate police attention. So, in working together, I think that those meetings, you know, if it's something that happens in the seventh grade, and then we don't see anything happen in this kid's life until he's, you know, a junior in high school, there's some sort of basis for us to work from, both with the schools and the courts, that we can all sort of collaborate and figure out, is this a kid that we should be a little bit more heightened on? The memorandum of understanding is also one of those benefit tools that we can lean on and say, normally this information wouldn't be shared, but because we're agreeing to share this information in the benefit of school safety, and that if there is an issue that, of cause, like that administrator feels we should know about or allow to share that information, and I think it's a great strength in our community to have that, because without it, it's a closed door. So I think it allows us the ability to communicate on a level that, you know, this is a potential for school safety. It may not be, you know, something of extraordinary cause, but where we can follow it along the way and see if there are more red flags, then at least everyone involved knows what's going on.
Could you talk a little bit about security in each of the buildings?
Yeah, I think it's good right now. I'm very happy with the security. We have buzzer systems. All of the staff at the front desks are aware, making sure that they know who the person is on the other side. There's a camera, so they have to physically be buzzed in. All the doors are secured outside of that.
In every school?
Whenever school's in session, at every school. We have phenomenal camera systems, thanks to Steve Berkholm. And they're, one of the concerns that I had as a brand-new school resource officer was the labeling of those cameras, because time is essential. So if something happens, they're very easily labeled, so that we can pull up video from a certain area in whichever school we want to look at pretty quickly and access that.
And can you pull that up in any school building, that information, or is it at the police station?
We, I think we have access throughout. So the police station has access to...
Brezner Hand and the block.
Right.
You have, you can pull up information right on site? Or you have that information at the police station?
We have access to those cameras.
Access to those cameras.
Okay, why not the high school?
I don't know what...
Steve?
I thought you did.
No, just those two.
When the new system was put...
It's part of the same system, so there's no reason that you shouldn't.
See, I was just talking about that issue we were having, so that's part of the upgrade.
Because that was a recent upgrade, in terms of the city council just this past year approved funding to upgrade the cameras at the high school, and that piece has to, that final piece then has to be locked into the police station. Can you please make that a priority?
Yeah.
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
Is that web access, so you guys can see it, like in the parking lot, for example?
It's at our dispatch center.
I understand that, so someone would have to watch it there and relay information to you? You guys, could you guys watch it?
Right, we don't have a mobile app that we can view the cameras on.
It's at dispatch, it's at our dispatch center. So if something was happening at the school, they could, they could see it at the school.
And then they would relay that to you guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in the new computers we put in the cars, they can't feed that to the...
No.
Okay. But they would have the information?
That's a question for our IT director, because I don't know if that could, I don't know if that could happen.
Do you think we need that level of information in the cruisers?
If it was easy to do, then I would say yes.
Okay, so we'll check on that, too?
Yeah, we can ask our IT director.
Okay. But they would feed information directly anyway with, you know, how long would a response time be for you to get from the police station downtown to one of the schools?
I think, over time, we've looked at our response time, and it's two minutes or less.
Okay.
Beyond that, I think the training that Marshal Murray referenced earlier was such a collaborative effort. We worked with officers that I've never even met, all the way from Groveland to Rowley. I think Georgetown participated. We had so many officers there, and it was a dynamic training for us, because I don't think in law enforcement we get those kind of opportunities too often. So the scenarios were very real, the officers were very engaged, and on top of it, it taught them teamwork, because in a real-life scenario like this, there would be officers from other agencies and outside agencies that you wouldn't necessarily know, but knowing that we're all trained the same and that we've all gone through that same experience, I thought it was a benefit to any officer that would have to respond, because God forbid it happened in Newburyport, or if it happened in Groveland, all of those officers would respond the same way, whichever school the training, the training follows. So I thought that that was a huge benefit, particularly with, you know, the current things that we're looking at. It's a huge benefit to have all of those agencies trained the same.
We have an area of our force and response system with the nine communities, and they have been tested, and we could have 25, 30 cruisers here in a short period of time, especially in a situation like that. Most recent ones we responded to from Newburyport was over at Kentucky, and it was a supposedly somebody had a gun, so there'd be a plague on for one of their plays. There was about 30 cruisers that responded to the high school, and they were there within probably 10 minutes on tops. Everybody was there, so.
Now, in that situation, say it happens here, would you then be in visiting command and control the site? I mean, just with all those people arriving on scene?
Yes.
Who?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a staging area, and then there's a, they send them up as needed, so. They're not just coming to the school and running in.
Well, I understand that, that's why I wanted to know, who has the lead command in terms of?
That would be, yeah, the community you're in.
Okay, okay. Other questions from school committee members?
Each of the schools have emergency plans that are really specific to the schools. And how, are you involved in the creation of those plans and the review of those plans?
Yes.
And I think they're reviewed annually, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So we have Alice training happening in the school, too. So could you talk a little bit about that, in terms of what the Alice training is? And principals, could you talk about who or how many teachers are trained in that, just to let the audience know? Could you talk about what the Alice training is?
Well, we, I think there's like, we close to 100% in the schools, or?
Teachers?
Teachers.
100% of the teachers have been trained in Alice?
Close to that. We haven't done the student, student, if they haven't participated in training on that, if they...
It's a fairing.
At the high school?
The high school was a little bit ahead, just in terms of when we first rolled this out to all of our staff, and we had the benefit of having summer to train non-teaching staff, so custodial staff, food service people, instructional aides. So we had from, we wrote a grant, got this e-learning tool, it's about a 90-minute online self-paced course tutorial, and that was our introduction to staff on this Alice model. The grant was then, or actually then the district purchased enough site licenses for all of our staff across the district to take this, and the goal being that 100% of our staff would be done with e-learning tool by the end of this year, due to contracts and availability of PD time, and when you have time, time to train teachers might be different than time to train custodians, et cetera. So we are getting close. Right now, Don Scan and myself are designated as the super users, which means we can see, but we have purchased like 535 sites, so that would be all staff throughout the district. It's a three-year contract, so there are new hires who'll be trained next year, could use it as often as you want as a refresher. So it's an introductory model of training for staff, and then each building is going to kind of roll out Alice to students at an age-appropriate level, whatever that might look like, varying from Brez to high school.
Thank you, Mike. I know Amy and Christine, you wanted to add something to that?
Sure. We, like Mike said, we're not as far along as the high school, but we are a place where our teachers and staff have completed the e-learning, including custodians. We do have some other staff members, such as our cafeteria staff, who we still need to get onto the e-learning. We have also had staff meetings that have been devoted to Alice. We have a training coming out next Friday, which is our professional development day, and Meg will be joining us for a live training. We had another early release day that was devoted to Alice, and our teachers had an opportunity to assess their spaces in terms of how do we actually get our own individual spaces prepared in a moment's notice. And Amy can speak a little bit to the training for the children and where we are there.
Sure. So the Alice training actually has many components to it, so a number of us actually were with Meg last year and some staff members before to participate in the lengthy training, where we are between Alice and the others. And so this year is the year that we are rolling it out completely in the district, and we're taking steps. The e-learning tool is the first step. At our staff meeting, we focused on what an alert looks like, what a lockdown looks like, how to inform us, whereas before we used to just do lockdowns. So now we're teaching the teachers to make decisions in ready time, so assessing their space, as Christina said, learning how to do a barricade on a door, not just a lockdown, learning when to make a decision is the best decision to evacuate and so on. So we're going through those phases with the teachers. We still have two more that we really want to train them on next Friday, and then we're going to do a live drill where they're actually put into a factual training, what part of the Alice component will they rely on based upon the scenario that we create. And then the next step in the spring is to roll it out to students in a very age-appropriate way, which can be a little challenging at the Brezner Hand with pre-83 students. We have a social story that we've written, and we're turning that into a storybook for the young children. We shared that at our parent Alice training night, but we had a vote, maybe over a month ago, yeah, I think it's March. We do have copies of that social story, which, you know, it's for children, you know, not to be scared, but to be safe. These are things that we have to do in the school. And so we are working on, as I said, turning that script into the story that is appropriate to share with pre-83. And it's almost done, we're really ready to roll that out. So the big shift overall is moving from just what a lockdown looked like to a much more active Alice model, and we've been, it's really been our professional development for the year, long before unfortunately what happened in Florida in the beginning of 2018 in many communities. This has been a goal of the district since last spring, and so we're happy to finally be getting towards some of the last phases of the role.
Amy, or one of the principals or the marshal, for those members of the audience who are not familiar with the sort of the basic principles of Alice training, is there a 20-minute nutshell about, you know, what some of the key features are?
Basically, Alice, it just gives you choices. It gives the teacher choices and help me out with the acronym.
So, it's an options-based program that offers, you can sort of tailor it to whatever the situation is. So alert, lockdown, inform, counter, evacuate. And each piece of the acronym basically addresses decision-making in the appropriateness of the decision in the situation that you're faced with. So if you're the first person to notice something, alerting everyone else to the danger. Lockdown, which is considered an enhanced lockdown. Traditionally, we're just putting everyone in a corner and shutting the lights off, closing the door, but we've now learned that barricading that door and improvising, you know, some form of difficulty when the door opens to try and distract someone or deter them from that room where there may be people hiding. Inform, which is another way of like getting information around how to call 911, if it's appropriate to call 911, things like that. The counter-strategy, which is very limited in our school district in saying that it is an option, if you had to fight, you could, but it's not something that we're leaning on as an option for kids to go to, it's the last means of defense. If you had to encounter someone, what would you do? And then evacuate, which is the preferred method for anyone faced with this kind of situation, is simply to get away from the danger as possible, as quickly as possible.
So it's always a fluid situation. So like I said, it gives the teachers choices with their class, and given the situation is, they act in that situation. If the threat's at one end of the school, if they can get out, get out. That's what we want, is many people to get out.
When we introduced this at the parent night, we also said that this is something that, where it is very difficult to roll it out at the Brezner Hand school, as it follows the students, it becomes a little bit more realistic, where we have to have a social story for those kids to understand what we're being, what they're being asked. As they get to the high school level, we can sort of use plain language and explain, you know, if there's a dangerous person in the building, this is what we expect you to do, and this is for your safety and everyone else's safety. But on top of that, it translates to, you know, when they graduate and go off to college and are on campus or are in a workplace environment, the same strategies would be applicable. So I think it's something that carries through with them for the rest of their lives.
Hi, thank you for doing this, first of all. So I am a parent of a sixth grader and a third grader, and I attended the Alice presentation, which was very thorough, and I was very happy to hear about it. And I feel very comfortable with the inside of the school, but my concern is, you know, I've heard a little bit in the news about, not overly familiar with the school environment in Florida, but it sounded like there was a lot of outdoor, you know, kids walking around from building to building. And so every day, I think of my daughter at the Brez, and I see all these kids outside right after school, and they're all out. And, you know, I think about the backyard, too, where they have the recess. So my question is, do, does Alice, do they, you know, do they, do the teachers, are the teachers, are the people outside with the kids during recess or before and after, mostly after-school pickup, you know, where they're all congregating outside? It's a very vulnerable environment. So I was wondering if Alice addresses that.
Open spaces.
Yeah, outside.
I think, I think maybe Christine and Amy can speak to how many of their faculty they have on duty outside. I don't really know those numbers. But it, I think the beauty of having an options-based program is that it's not a stat, there's no static rally point. There's not one place you have to go. It's realistically evade dangers any way possible. So I don't know if you guys maybe can shed light on?
I think that more it's about the protocols and the training that we have in place. I think unfortunately, any outside space is vulnerable, whether you're in Market Square or you're at a movie theater or wherever you are. We do have some systems that are in place, like the cameras, we're able to make announcements not just to the inside of the building, but also to the speakers on the outside of the building, which we do very frequently, but we would do obviously in case of an emergency. When staff members are outside on the playground, even if we have a fire drill, they can see the flashing white lights through the window. But I think mostly it's the alert, is teaching the staff, teaching and training everyone how to be aware, how to be alert, if they see something, say something, inform, you know. Particularly at our level, we're somewhat moving from they have to contact the office for them to tell us what to do, to know, you see something happening, you are the first person in line, and you're the one that needs to make that decision. So I think it's just that paradigm shift in thinking, rather than, you know, how can we protect our relevant spaces? You know, it's more the training and the mindset. And that's, you know, just a very true transparent answer. I don't know if it makes you feel more, you know...
I guess, I guess my one question is, in the training, will outdoor training be part of it?
Yes, we do talk about outside spaces, we do talk about other vulnerable times of the day, like what to do if you're in the cafeteria, what to do if you're in transition, what to do if you're not with your teacher and you're traveling in the hallway. So all of those layers are absolutely built in, not only with the teachers, but also with the students. We teach even the really young students who to go to for help or what if you are traveling from that front to your classroom, where to go, what to do. So again, I think it's just the mindset more, and I think that we're all just a lot more aware when we're in public spaces now, whether it's at school or whether we're just out in the fire department.
Our building is laid out in zones, and I know our building isn't the only school that has zones, so that we have staff who are typically in those particular areas that we've assigned them to, but we also know that we have to empower our teachers and staff to act in the moment. And there are times even within the building, we're not always going to be in the zones that we are aligned to, right? So we all need to be prepared to respond, no matter the situation. And I think one of the things that we've learned through the marshal and through our school resource officer is, no matter what situation we need to deal with, they're all unique and they're all different. So yes, we definitely prepare the scenarios, and we have the years even prior to Alice, but we need to be able to think on our feet in this one.
And I was just going to add to that, that due to some school safety grants that we've had in the new school building projects, we've been lucky, or the renovations, we've been very fortunate to be able to have walkie-talkies. So I can remember at the ground or the old Brezner Hands, you know, we maybe had a handful of walkie-talkies through the building. Now, almost 50% of our staff have them, so that that is another means of communication that's used throughout the day for all different things, but it's also quick and informative whether or not somebody is outside. And their real quality, walkie-talkies is saying like, yes, we can tune in with the police and the fire department, so that's an additional means of communication as well.
Yes, well, that's everything that we've built into our new facility, right? So the technology is incredible. Just thinking back on the outdoor concern, will the playground staff also be trained in Alice as well?
They are, yeah. They've done some, I don't know if we're at 100%, those are the two groups that are still leading the e-learning, cafeteria workers and the recess lunch monitors. Some have worked their way through that, some are also, will also be joining us for the additional trainings.
Okay.
But they are certainly, you know, familiar with all the emergency protocols that we have in place. It's just getting everyone updated as we move towards Alice. We have to get, make them work through it as well.
Is that the same at Knockmullen?
Say that one more time.
Could you, where you are in terms of Knockmullen?
Yeah.
In terms of where you are with training?
So, we, we're like one stage behind the high school in all of our training, so every teacher's been trained, every instructional assistant's been trained, we just haven't trained custodial staff and cafeteria staff, but our teachers have done, started last spring, so three or four different types of trains. Our next stage is with students, and Megan and I have been planning that, and our plan originally was to do it this March, and it still is, so we just have to get the final nuts and bolts of that and then start to talk to students about...
And is it teachers or instructional aides that go out on recess with the students?
It's a mixture of both, so.
And they're all trained?
All trained. There's always a lunch leader who always has a walkie-talkie on them, and then there's, you know, varying numbers in grade for instructional assistants, but there's a number of instructional assistants out there who've all been trained.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Yes?
So, my daughter's in kindergarten, so this is all pretty new to me, but I was really surprised to learn that it's the norm. It seems like not just in our district, but probably throughout the country, that after hours, the schools are all open. So, for all of us parents who are worried about someone coming into the school when the doors are just open and waiting there overnight until the next day, because anybody can walk in after hours, what would you say, what would you say? That's a huge fear of mine. I don't know if there's a way that you can quell that.
You talk about like after-school programs and things like that?
Well, after school, anyone can walk in the building. Yeah, so not, not for the kids who are necessarily, well, sure, yes, for the kids who are in the after-school programs, yes. I don't mean to dismiss that, but I mean more, if I was a bad...
But I mean more, if I was a bad person, I could just walk into any of the school, come, you know, 3:00 PM, and I could wait there all night and the next morning I would be inside already. And then all of a sudden, all of these security measures don't make me as a parent feel comfortable because I'm envisioning a bad person being in, inside the school.
So I understand any.
There's motion detectors.
And there's also, there's a custodian on after hours, correct? And they limit the travel.
Till 10:30.
They limit the travel into the school.
Right, there are also motion detectors, a security alarm system. So if anyone's moving around in the building after the custodians leave, alarm system's going to head off. They would have to stay perfectly still all night long and not be detected.
So why are the buildings unlocked after school?
Well, for example, at the Knockmullen building, we don't, so we don't have anybody in the office who could, you could do the buzzer system where you could let people in and out. So the building is open for the adult ed to come in and out for classes. For the high school basketball team practicing in our gymnasium. So yeah, the building is open after. Depending on if there's adult ed, there is always a custodian in the building when it's open or to, usually I think at the Knockmullen.
I think, I think the demographic of people in the building changes slightly. Where there are some younger children activities, it's obviously a concern as a parent. But I think for the majority of those buildings, it's older people that are using the facilities or high school kids. And the same theory would apply, that they, something could happen in a space that there is no alert other than them witnessing it. Sometimes unfortunately, you may be the first person to witness something happening. And again, you would flow right into the same model of alert, lockdown, evacuate, whatever it is that you need to do. Which is, I think, you know, it's why we're teaching this model. Because something could happen right in front of you without you realizing.
So there's a large after-school program at Brezner Hand. So have those people been trained, who run that program?
When you're referencing, are you referring to the Y?
Yeah.
Yes, they, they go through their own trainings to be prepared for after-school hours. Now, when, when their, if their program is up and running, door one is the only door that is unlocked. And that is for parents to be able to get in and access their children. And children for the Y program can be outside and inside in a number of locations with adults spread throughout all of those locations.
Okay.
The other thing is, we also have the basketball program. We have youth basketball beginning, you'll remember right through sometime in March. One of the things that we've discussed over time is that the schools are community buildings. They're not, they're not just schools, right? And I'm not minimizing it when I say that. But we've had numerous conversations about the doors being unlocked beyond school hours. And maybe, you know, we revisit that again as a district or as a city at some point.
Okay, thank you.
The only one, I don't think the PTO's after-school program that started today at the Brez, those are just parents, the parents of the instructors. So I guess they wouldn't be trained.
They would not be fully trained.
And I don't even know how you could even do that because it's, they get found out a handful of weeks before it starts. It's a really kind of fluid, transient community instructor.
Well, I think that you had said that you had provided training in January for parents. And I think that's something that we should do and then at least encourage parents to go.
Yeah.
And at least they'll have a basic understanding of.
I just mean they find out who the instructors are like the very last second.
But I think everyone should, should be trained if you're a volunteer in the schools.
Don't, don't those parents also, because they're dealing with students, aren't they also fingerprinted?
Yeah, fingerprinted.
They're all, so they're all four, you think.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
Just to clarify one point, the January parent night was not a training night, it was just, this is what the district's doing.
Oh, okay.
It was a question and answer session.
Okay.
We wanted to make sure the parents were in the room before we brought anything to students.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
If there is any need, the Alice website is actually very helpful and gives a really clear demonstration, an explanation of what it is that we're sort of putting into these schools. So if there's any question about that, going to the Alice Institute website is, is a great resource.
Thank you.
Do we have that linked? Is that linked on our school website or school committee website?
We should do that. I think it was. I also wonder if, for the, for the parents, whether or not they might be able to access the online training. If we had more licenses, that where they could do it online.
I think that, is that available?
Uh, the e-training, I know that the district purchased it at certain grades based on how many we had.
Yeah, there's like a subscription for it.
It's like a sliding scale, the more participants you have, the cheaper per head. But $12 to $16 per user, per year, or per cycle contract. So initially it was about $2,000 to get the e-training. And we just divided that up to as many people as we could offer to. So we had 135 slots for the first $2,000. But then when we extended that contract up to around roughly $5,000, it, I think it hit 535 users. So it was relatively inexpensive.
I have a couple of questions in the comments. So I'm a mental health professional in the community. And my son's in 10th grade, my daughter's in 8th grade, I have none. I happen to work with kids from the diversion program, also work with law enforcement, that's my two specialties. That's kind of ironic that I'm here. So I'm kind of more concerned about the mental health aspect of everything. It seems like there's a common thread here with these shooters, that they have issues, obviously. And it feels like they've been, kind of like they've slipped through the cracks over time. And you talk about how everybody's trying to like identify these kids. And I'm just wondering, like, what kind of treatment programs are there for them? Like, are they sent to treatment programs and then is there follow-up? Because I could get a call and say, someone could say, this student is having problems and could you see them? And then they could not keep the appointment, they could come once, they could come twice.
Yeah.
And then there's no real, you know, follow-up to see what's really going on. When that letter came out recently about what happened at the high school, I sent email back saying, well, can you assure me a little bit, like, did this person, I know they went through the court system, but did they actually get help? I'd feel better knowing that they didn't. Is somebody keeping tabs on that? I know there's privacy issues.
Right, there are a lot of things that we can't share. And I think everything that could be shared was added to that letter. It didn't come from the police department, but the things that could be shared were. We also, I know, have a strong relationship with all of the adjustment counselors in all of the schools. I check in with all of them on a regular basis. Some of their concerns come forward into our quarterly meetings, just so that we can sort of keep a pin in it when we have a concern about a kid. And if it's escalated, if it seems to have subsided, if they're in treatment, if they're not in treatment. Again, things that can't really share openly, but that at least we have a running sort of conversation about. We do refer for behavioral health services and things like that. We have certainly recommended crisis evaluations for kids who fit the need. So I have good feelings about our relationship, particularly with the adjustment counselors, who have good relationships with any at-risk kids that we've ever come upon.
So they keep an eye and follow through on all that?
Absolutely.
One thing I would, one thing I would add to that is, is sort of a constant conversation among the leadership of the district and the administration and the school committee has been the social and emotional wellness of students. And to that end, we continue to try to find ways to strengthen what we've got in the district available to kids. And we've been adding, you know, adjustment counselors. In this year's budget, we have a request from the Brezner Hand to, to get a full-time social worker assigned to the Brezner Hand. So we're, we're sort of very cognizant of that, we're very cognizant of the stress these kids are under. In addition to that, there's conversations about expanded day, there's conversations about homework that are going on. So we're trying to look at what some of the stresses are for some of these kids. But we're also trying to expand what we're able to do in terms of seeing what's going on with kids while they're in school.
I know it's hard to monitor social media, but it does seem like there's a lot going on there. I don't know if you can speak to that at all?
In what terms? There's, there's a lot going on.
I know.
Except it doesn't just.
Wrong topic, but it just feels like.
Well, I, I mean, I can narrow one piece down, I would say, are there any, I don't know, anonymous lines for high school kids or middle school kids to be able to reach out to a safety person, an adult that might not be their parents? You know, where if they pick up on, on and hear things, you know, how do they, do kids in the schools know how to report things? And, you know, like through social media, it might be a nice and easier way for them because they're on an office.
That's what we're hoping, to report with the SRO, is we're hoping that they can approach her and share those things with her. That's part of the reasons why putting the police officer in the school and getting to know the kids. But it takes a while to build that trust. And I'm sure people approach Meg and I'm sure some don't.
I think there's a lot of reluctance for kids to report, but who they do have a stronger rapport with is usually who it comes through. But we've been really fortunate to have good relationships, again, with the adjustment counselors and things like that. So when something does come through, the leadership in all the buildings has a great way of sort of introducing me to the conversation. So that the report sort of lends itself from that, that staff member that they might have a connection with, over to me. And I think we've been pretty successful with it. Anytime we've had a student with concerns that comes forward, I think we have a good enough relationship that we've sort of been able to like meld one relationship into the next. And they feel more comfortable leaving, knowing that the information went to the right hands.
I think the other thing that.
The majority of, the majority of our students want to have a safe environment. So, you know, 20 years ago, nobody's running to the teacher and saying, hey, so-and-so's doing this or that. I think today, that happens a lot more than you think. And they're not afraid to go tell somebody, hey, right, when this person's doing this and, and it's addressed.
And the other thing that I think is important is that our teachers were a pilot cohort at Leslie and took a, trained and certified in this trauma, which I think is something that is really, really significant. And our superintendent has been trained and more teachers have gone through that training also. How many now, Angela, have been trained in?
Well, we have, you know, our first cohort had 25, 20-some teachers that were trained in all four levels of trauma-sensitive schools. And then we have another cohort who have taken the first two classes and we're looking to offer the third.
So we continue, you know, on all levels, I think, trying to, you know, whether it be, you know, the types of training, working with the police, but also internally, in terms of looking at the social, emotional needs of kids and really see that this is important in terms of adjustment counselors and additional supports, as well as additional training to staff. And there are also the mindfulness programs that they do, yoga and other, you know, to try and help bring down stress levels of kids too. It's happening all across the district, so.
I do agree though, with regards to social media, that it would be nice to know somehow that we're messaging to both students and parents. Sort of a see something, say something. And whether or not they have a relationship with you or just to their teachers or to administrators or somebody. I know in my own school, I've had parents call up at 1:00 in the afternoon and say, you know, I didn't send Joey to school today because so-and-so is on social media saying they were going to bring a knife and be angry. And I was like, well, thanks for letting me know at 1:00 in the afternoon. I would have loved this information before the student was in the building for six hours. You know, so that sort of thing. But people, as much as you say, everyone wants a safe environment, people are still a little reticent to snitch or to speak up or to, you know, that sort of thing. But it really does need to be a see something, say something. Because, you know, in my own professional and personal experience, kids in crisis are going to reach out and send those signals. You know, like everyone's been saying, the kid in Florida had enough information out there. Somebody should have known and said something and taken a deeper, deeper dive into the look. So maybe the conversation could happen somewhere, like through our wellness classes or parent information nights or somehow to just let everybody in the community know that if something weird's going on on Snapchat or Instagram, just give a call and say, hey, just so you know, I saw this post. And, you know, let the schools handle it, it's not, safety is better than snitching, you know?
So our daughters are at the high school. And I know that there's a level of nervousness and vulnerability and quite frankly, being scared because we had Kentucky in January, now we've got Parkland. So, but the other thing is that they want a voice, they want to be a part of this process. You're seeing it with, with marching and everything like that. So I guess two parts of the question. Number one, what can we as a district do to encourage that, to bring them in? So it's not just the parents and the staff and the police department that are saying, this is what we're going to do, but having it come up as well. The second piece is back to the Alice training. How often is this training going to happen? Because I understand that you can't train everybody to be a first responder. But, you know, training once a year, I'm not sure that that's going to have the effect that people actually have an idea of what to do if a situation happens. I know that those are two distinct, distinct questions, if I wanted to get that out.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment and then turn it over. The, I think the Parkland situation is, is a watershed in a lot of ways. And one of the things that it's done here in this district, from what I understand, is it's really opened up a conversation about, you know, what is us, what kind of a society are we living in? How are we going to deal with this? I know that those conversations from talking, and maybe you could share a little bit more. We're having those conversations both at the middle school and at the high school with students who have stepped up and said, look, we, we really feel like we have to say something about what's going on. I don't, you know, I know that plans aren't nailed down, but those conversations are happening. If you had anything you wanted to share, Mike or Lisa or Tim?
Today at the high school, there was a group of students, about over 40 students that met after school for over 90 minutes. A student forum, a couple of students went forward to the principal last week and said, we want to get involved with this March 14th National Wildlife Day. We need to talk to community members, we need to talk to our families, what can the school do to support us in this? And so today was the first kind of brainstorming session for, some of it was logistics. A big part of it is what's the communication, what's the package you're putting out there? What is it, how are you going to use this as a day to unify the school? As opposed to kind of have people pick different sides of a political debate? So the goal is to kind of have, students are going to do some form of a walkout on March 14th. Some students, those that choose. But the students that were there today, and Peter was in and out for a part of this as well, really were, oh, we can all agree that everyone wants to come to school feeling safe every day, regardless of what your political views are. Although nationally, if you look this up, this March 14th is a day to kind of get legislators' attention in terms of gun control. So some students, that's really more their intention explicitly. Others, it's more of a way of activism, involvement, showing pride in their school. The word respect came up many times from students. So we plan to meet again in the next day or two, maybe tomorrow, and button down some more of what it would look like. So students are talking, they'll kind of, it could be 50% of the school that chooses to walk out, we don't know. So there's, you know, class Facebook messaging tools in terms of coordinated efforts. They're going to make signs, they're looking at potentially having a moment of silence for some of the recent victims, but then also having speakers, student speakers. So this is all student-led at this point right now, we're just kind of taking it in and seeing what we can offer in terms of facilitation, expectations, safety. Some parameters for this kind of school sanctioned event is what it's becoming almost.
Middle School is in a similar position, but I want to go back to Alice just for a second. I think in response to your question, Alice is empowering for our students as well. And we haven't gotten there at Middle School yet, because we're just trying to follow a foot line in high school and do what the sponsors, the students. And I think that will give us a sense of how our kids might respond emotionally. But to have a conversation in like a high school advisory setting, we're going to hold you through some kind of home setting, where it's just a conversation. Here's what the Alice model is, here's where it's just bringing you up a little bit to have choices, to make decisions in a moment, together with the adults in the building, to know where your exits are, to know how the building works, to know that you have the power to make a decision for yourself, you know, safety based on the standard of use in the future. And that's a very different message than we have been sending to students. So our goal is really just to take our time to make the adults feel comfortable with that message as well. So that when we are sharing the message with students, we're not sort of putting more stress or anxiety on the adult side, onto the students themselves. It's really important. So it has taken them a little bit of time together, Meg and Tim, have the adults a little bit of work in it. It starts as. a little bit of work in it and start as a great global auditorium and follow up with smaller conversations in the homerooms. Hopefully again with adults who they're comfortable with, and I think that's where the reporting piece will come back, is that in every school model, I think our social model, we're establishing, who, is there at least one adult for you in the building who you're comfortable with? Maybe that's the person you're going to talk to. Is it your wellness teacher? Is it your assistant principal? You see everybody in the cafeteria and hallway? Is it your homeroom teacher? Is it your advisory teacher? Maybe it's your district teacher. And hopefully, I don't think we're 100% there yet, but that has been a goal across the district of who, does every kid have somebody? And that's going to, in our strategic plan, that's something that we can't know. So I think we're working on that and I think that is putting all the pieces together where we'll feel good to kids, I think, be a more powerful and have a voice especially in the wellness level. In regards to the walkout, we're sort of in the same boat. I've got a group of about 18 eighth graders who have been taking the lead, although I think Tim had a smaller group of sixth graders who approached him today. We're going to let our eighth graders take the lead with some support with a couple of teachers and we'll have lunch with them tomorrow once we figure out where they are headed with, it's a 17 minute walkout. So our goal will be to help support them with logistics and security once we have an idea of what they're trying to do. And from the teacher's side, they're just helping them to facilitate, well, if you're going to do something like this, what does it look like? Why are you doing it? How do you get everybody to sort of act in the way that you want them to act when you have a group of six to eight graders? I'm not sure again how many students might choose to do it. Students who don't choose to do it are welcome to stay inside the building and we'll have that sort of manage as well for the safety perspective.
Yes.
Thank you. I am Joy Carter. I have a child in the eighth grade and a son in the ninth grade. And a few things, thank you so much for bringing up the mental health issue because I do think that is one of the biggest things that we need to kind of go through. Before I talk about the walkout, I just want to also say that I think parents need to start also taking ownership of their children and not just expecting the administration and the city to kind of know what's going on. I mean, I actively keep an eye on both of my children's cell phones, they know it, their friends know it. I find a lot out through that. I find out a lot of kids and about a lot of what's going on. So I would be the first person if I found something.
Give me a ring, anytime.
And, you know, so I'm sure whoever's listening now, they know that, they all know it. But it's, I feel like I, I pay for those, those items. And so when I do see things and I'm suspect, I do ask the kids about it and we do go through a conversation. I think a lot of people are not having these conversations with their kids. They're giving them these, this technology and they don't know how to use it, they don't know how they're Snapchatting, they don't know what they're saying, they don't know where it's being heard. And I think so parents really need to start having more conversations with their children in general about that. The other thing was having a freshman who was concerned about the walkout. The first thing he said to me was, how does that make any sense if we all start walking out of school? Like, how are we going to be safe? So why would I want to do that? He goes, why wouldn't we just go to the back field and what's the security there? Like, how are we going to be secure during a walkout if we're all walking out? He goes, to be honest, every day we all walk out, if somebody really wanted to do that, they could just come on by and do a whole lot more damage than they could coming through the front door. And I actually, I thought about it and I thought, you know, you're right, you're absolutely right. So what is the security for all of these walkouts, at least in our community? And we're thinking like, you know, we obviously want the kids to have a voice. That's very important in this topic because it does involve them, but we also want to make sure that if they are doing these walkouts, they're not just, you know, I think maybe the gym or the field, or maybe there's other ways. I mean, I know in other places they've done 17 minutes of silence, they've done other things. I think just the walkout at the front door, or the summer that it sounded, I don't know how you safely do that. And again, I've heard some kids are doing it just to get out of school and, you know, so. More want to talk, just wanted to hear what your thoughts are if you do have a lot of high schoolers that decide to start walking out, is there going to be a process?
Well, I've been in conversation with the superintendent regarding that and I think, like Mike, you touched on it, each, I think each school is coming up with a plan and whatever that plan is going to be, we're going to let them know what each school's doing. And then we'll decide how many units we're going to send in each school, if there's going to be security around the school for that. But I think the plan is trying to contain it some, some way.
Yeah.
So, and I think obviously you haven't decided yet, so.
Right. Additionally, we've also spoken about staggering those times. So I know that you have one in, you know, one kid in each school, rather than have the whole district sort of walk out together, we're going to facilitate time slots. On top of it, we have the River Valley that also has considered some sort of demonstration. So my preference would be that not all three schools do this at the same time so that we can deploy units appropriately to, to provide a, a sense of security
Yeah.
for each, each school. But you hit the nail on the head in terms of the parents there. Thank you for saying that because I think anyone listening probably should take heed to your words, that parents need to know the user policies of the social media that they're using and things like that.
Not like the teacher's job to please the children all day long, like, and to know what's going on, like they have to at home start some conversation, know what's going on in the lives. I mean, I do so much.
I think pretty recently the schools, I'm not sure what the source was, but somebody sent home a parent guide to different social media sites.
That was Tara.
Tara, and it was, it was really good. So I wonder if we could, A, post that and B, sort of like keep it on rotation? You know, like-
We can reset that. We set it also at the NOC and it's on the NOC and on all the websites.
Yeah.
It is a really good resource.
It's, it was a really, really well done and it covered a lot of different things and it spoke to, so I don't know how far that got out, but I remember reading that and I kind of stole it from my school, for example. But there are a lot of digital safety pieces that parents could, could learn about and, because there's a lot to learn.
So just to address things from, I'm representing the teachers here. So we've had a number of train, and I teach at the high school. We have an advisor visi program that we've had for a couple of years. And within that, after we did our Alice training for the kids in two cycles, we met with our 10 kids to talk about the video that we watched from Wall fam. We discussed the different stages and what we would do in the room. My background before a teacher, I was a pilot, so I'm all about normal, abnormal and emergency procedures all along for that stuff. So when it comes to the training, Mike and I had continued conversations about, okay, what's the next step? How do we walk through the next piece, the next piece, the next piece? So that we're familiar with it so you don't get into the place of these of sort of what we remember from fire drills, these kids going through the fuck up. And, you know, it takes us longer to get out of the building, I think, with the fire because of the bell of the day. So, and, you know, we've worked on just talking to the kids, okay, what's the next step in? What can we do? What do we have here? If we have to get to the point of we're going to have to counter what we have that's in here? And if we have to leave, you know, we're, we're trained to egress the building, we have a roof up ready, but if that doesn't work out, so we went through in our mind, how else do I get out of the building? And then how will we work together as a team to get out? So we've, we've had that. And when it comes to the recording piece, I think, besides our, our staff that a lot of the kids go through, we do have those relationships and someone's going to come to say, hey, I heard this, hey, I saw that. Because, you know, and we're seeing them on the hall. And one of the things that we try to do as much as possible, bell rings in between class and I'm sitting in my room, out in the hall, watching what's going on at the start of the day, I'm watching that stuff that's, that's going on. When the social media piece, we had retired state police officer, or she's still active, I forget.
She might not be in a consultant.
Right. Now she came in earlier and did this whole thing on social media that I think she did a couple of forums about later that night.
Yeah.
Right. So we, we've had those pieces in there, the training, it's going to, it's going to take us a while. To the day, we're trying to coordinate with how that's going to go. We as staff, right, we're, we're there with them, we're the ones in the building. And we're thinking, okay, kids are either going to leave, kids are going to stay. And we're going to figure out who do we put where with what kids and who wants to go or who wants to stay in to look and say, okay, yeah, we are making that perimeter for them and to make sure that they're safe the whole time. And that's one of the things that the kids brought up, that's one of the things that we brought up in the meeting. There's still the safety of that day and every day that we're looking for. So we're out there, we're watching. And then, you know, this is a paradigm shift for us. Like when I went to education 22 years ago, this was not part of my training, okay? And even when I was flying 22 years ago, this wasn't part of my training, even that stuff has changed. So we're working. I had kids who went through the school myself and I, you know, can understand your concern. So I think we're slowly, slowly getting them to put these things in place because you can't rush, well, I say procedures, that's why I say slowly, not as we're going to pay forever, but make sure that we're doing it correctly for everyone.
Thank you, Peter. Other questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
Hi. I have a student both in Mullen and at the NOC. And I've also kind of been an instructional assistant in both Newburyport and Newberry before moving on to do the same job for kind of like a more privatized special education school. And I'm just kind of wondering if it's going to be a continued sense of drills or training throughout the year or if this is going to be early things? Because in my experience with, say, the safety care protocols that I was trained in when I was working at the schools, specifically in like Newburyport and Newberry, I was trained every year and it was beneficial, but it was only beneficial to the extent that I knew what I was supposed to do. I would get the training once a year and then with the students that I dealt with, I didn't ever actually have to use it. And so I never actually felt confident in putting those things into place if I needed to, even though I should. And it wasn't until I was in a school where I was using those protocols on sometimes a daily basis even, that I really did feel confident putting those into place. So I just want to make sure that this is going to be like a one-time training or a one-time drill a year kind of thing to make sure that everyone is confident and their minds are constantly sharp on what is exactly supposed to happen.
Thank you. I think the, what Mike was saying in terms of having the, you know, the E-file with this Alice training on it so that teachers can be refreshed on a regular basis, I think is helpful too.
Okay.
But I don't get the impression that this is a one and done kind of thing. It sounds like it's an ongoing conversation
Right.
with each group of people and refreshers and on professional days throughout the school year, that there's pieces of this too. Am I correct?
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, it's also written into our, into our policy
Okay.
that we have frequent updates from our staff members and that that will vary depending on the level, depending on the topic of the, of the training, whether it's every six months or whether it's once a year. But one of the things that our policy directs the superintendent to do as part of the, their emergency plans for each school is determine what that training program needs to be at each school and to make sure that it's implemented and be able to report back to the school committee on that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I really appreciate Marshall and Megan taking the time to come here tonight and I hope that this helped in terms of conversation and certainly we can, you know, do these kinds of conversations when, you know, the parents feel the need to come back and we can update everyone, you know, probably start of next year, we could do another one of these conversations about where we are in terms of training, especially for new parents who are coming into the district. So thank you all for being here, I really appreciate, I appreciate the principals from the schools being here also. And I, I really think these were great questions and good dialogue that we've had, so I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was really good.
It's nice. This is, this is an opportunity for another somewhat open-ended conversation with a person who's going to be, I think, very important to our school district. And I don't know if the mayor wants to introduce him or Mike does.
Mike, I'll leave it to you.
Yeah, all right. So this is, come on up. This is Andrew, Andy Wolfe, who is going to be the next Newburyport High School principal effective July 1st. But we're going to start to transition Andy into the community already. This is going to be one of our first steps. I guess this can be your opposite. I'll, I'll say the opposite if you want. So we're coordinating calendars and trying to get times to start with some transition planning and overlapping with Mike's parent. We have plans to get together this Thursday. But Andy is administrator at Salem High School, where he's been for 24 years. He's currently in the role of administrator of teaching and learning. He was background as, as a science teacher, was a housemaster, and he's more recently had this administrator of teaching and learning job. So it's a pleasure to introduce Andy to the committee and the community.
Before we have lots of questions, I want to give Andy an opportunity to make a statement or just share a little bit about, about this, welcome to our community.
Yeah. Hey, well, I mean, I think to really kind of jump into it, I think this is actually was a great meeting for me to even come and attend. When I was realizing when I was ready towards the end of last year to really take the next step to become a principal, having a lot of conversations with my boss, but then also our district leadership, because I've been just so actively involved in Salem for all these years, you know, I went through the process cautiously and really looking at, you know, district mission statements, high school mission statements and strategic plans that were in place. And, and I even said this throughout the whole interview process with each team that was interviewing me. One of the, one of the statements that I found most intriguing about Newburyport is one of the, one of the objectives within the strategic plan that really talks about building a culture that really helps everyone to better themselves. And it's not just about the kids, it's about, it's about everybody and it's about community. And that plastered within the mission of the district and in the high school is really about getting kids to recognize that, you know, they are part of the community. And what I just witnessed at this meeting is just, I mean, it's a difficult conversation to have, it's, everybody has different opinions, but the way this committee just embraced that dialogue with the community just is a great example of how this, this town is living its mission for its schools. And so I, I'm even more excited now just sitting here for this, to become a part of that and to become a part of that, the ongoing dialogue that really kind of brings everybody together to ensure that we do have a safe environment for our kids to go through, but one that is pushing everybody in a way that is supportive. Realizing, you know, one of the pieces that I heard in regards to stressors, you know, it really is about kids really having that strong connection to someone in their, in their building. And that's a big piece that I'm an advocate of, not just, you know, student voice, but really making sure that kids feel like they have a strong sense of belonging, that they are connected to at least one adult in the building and that they feel that they can trust and confide in. And that's what really brings information really to the forefront. So I'm, thank you for having me here. And I'm, I am excited to get started. Mike has been great, he's helping me coordinate really kind of the initial meetings over at the high school so I can really pull together my entry plan so we can just really come July, really just get moving on the transition.
I open it up for any questions that anybody might have?
Some of the challenges you think you're going to be faced with, Andrew?
Well, I mean, I think one of the biggest things and what I've been trying to think through in terms of, you know, how I'm going to go about the, the entry plan piece, is really trying to learn and really have set up a kind of just series of meetings with as many teachers as I can, community members and the kids, you know, to really learn what they feel are the strengths of Newburyport High School, but then also at the same time, you know, what challenges do they think it currently have so that I can kind of really work with the administrative team, the teachers and the student leadership groups to really kind of plot through, all right, how do we, how do we strengthen these challenges? And I think just taking on the new leadership role, that would probably be the other, the other challenge that I will face. But I feel like, you know, one of my strengths has always been about building highly collaborative teams that really build an active voice and not making decisions in a vacuum. So for the past six years in my role as the administrator of teaching and learning, you know, I'm right there with the principal, but many times I'm taking the charge on a lot of our school initiatives and really just kind of keeping him in the loop in terms of the steps that we're taking and really then working with him in terms of what the overall decisions may be.
Could you talk about one of your most initiatives that you're most proud of that you've been able to introduce or work on?
Yeah, actually, one of them that I'm, I'm currently working on now, so in my role as administrator of teaching and learning, a big piece of it is on really working with teachers in terms of their instructional planning, the curriculum, but a big- in the classroom. And so a big piece that we now are currently going towards is, we just implemented a PD curriculum around integrated learning, which is really about, here's my content that I need to deliver, but I recognize I have a whole person in front of me. So it's teaching beyond your content and really recognize how do you incorporate opportunities in the classrooms for kids to learn how to collaborate with each other and work with each other and get to know each other as a big piece of that. But then also kind of constructing opportunities that bring kids into the moment. Because realizing any kid, you know, whether it was just a tough morning at home or whatever it is, you know, stuff, they're coming into the building with stuff on their mind and coaching teachers to coach kids to get into the moment so they can maximize what's happening in the classroom.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions for us?
I'm sure I am going to, as I learn more.
Yeah, we just dodged the budget board.
I guess I'll just reach out and say welcome.
Oh, thank you very much.
And I see it. And I, I'm sort of looking for the verb, I'm looking for, entice you to consider what you were just talking about, which is communication. I know it's a theme we talk about here in the school committee a lot, and it's a theme that we hear from parents a lot and from students a lot, truthfully. And, you know, I know you were just talking about an entry plan, getting to talk to people and getting to hear from people, but the question is, not really this summer, but in the fall, the spring, and next summer and going on forward, how do we find out what the students, teachers, and parents are experiencing on a regular basis?
Mm-hmm.
And how does that information trickle up to you in a sort of actionable way so that it becomes a back and forth of improvement? You know, because that's always something I think people really struggle with, like, I'm going through this at school, I don't know what to do with the information or how to, I don't even know how to talk to somebody about it. Even if they have that person at school, it can still be, if there's not a system set up where people understand how to access and use a voice. So I guess I just entice you to think about that.
Yeah, and definitely, I think I have a responsibility to model that. And I think the entry plan is always that great opportunity to do so, because part of the process is, after collecting all of those interviews and working with a team, which would also include students and parents and, and members of the faculty, would be to deconstruct and identify the trends, which then gets shared with everybody. Because then from there, it's a matter of constructing your teams to then put some of those recommendations into action, to hopefully kind of create this culture that is, it's always about finding the next best step, right? There's never necessarily the right answer, but there's always kind of the next best step to take and realizing that, that next step is going to lead you to another step and really getting that culture going. Thank you.
You're going to have the opportunity to work with a really top-notch group of people on the leadership team. I kind of envy you in that regard, not that these aren't top-notch colleagues of mine, but I think that you're going to have a lot to contribute, both to the leadership team itself and to the district and certainly to high school. I just welcome you and I'm excited about working with you and...
Yeah. Thank you. And actually, just to kind of share a story, so we've had other administrators that have gone on to become principals in other districts, so kind of a similar setup with the interviews where a team comes and they visit with the school and do their site visit. And so on my day when I had set up my groups of teachers and members of the community, and I was, I was telling Susan this because it was, because this is what made me even more, at that point I was like, oh, I really hope I get this. Just everybody who was walking out of there is like, wow, that is, what a cool team, just in terms of their approach to the whole process and just how comfortable they made everybody feel in the room when they were asking questions about me, which is not necessarily always the case with teams that come in to kind of do their visits. So I thought that was, that was something I shared with Susan, because I think it's just a testament to how Newburyport conducts business.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
The next item before we get to the consent agenda is we need to take a vote tonight on reappointing Ben Fischera as our Newburyport representative with your voc tech. We have voted on him in the past to fill a term of somebody who had resigned. This would be for a three-year term. My understanding from a conversation I had with the superintendent is that he has communicated, he's indicated by email to us that he would like to be reappointed and would serve. I will say, just some of my conversations with Whittier, Ben has been a really good representative of Newburyport to that committee and has added a lot to that committee based on feedback I've gotten from them.
Motion to approve a three-year appointment of Ben Fischera to be the Newburyport representative at the Whittier Voc Tech school.
Need further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. One abstention. We have a second set of minutes for the business meeting of February 27th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Does anybody have any changes they would like to recommend?
Yes, I do. In the second paragraph on public comment, Bruce Menon stated this type of forum was not appropriate to discuss this type of situation. I think what Mr. Menon meant there, it was not appropriate to discuss individual student situations, because the general topic is definitely one which we would be willing to entertain.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. Do we have any warrants?
We have three warrants. The first, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $4,176.65 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. Do we have any warrants?
We have three warrants. The first, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $12,937.21 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. Do we have any warrants?
We have three warrants. The first, I move that the following name bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $12,937.21 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And last, but not least, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $232,045.57 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts. Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We now come to our period of public comment. This is an opportunity for people who are attending in the audience to make a comment on anything that they would like to make a comment on. We do ask you to give us your name and to try to hold to two minutes. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will close on the comment. I don't believe we have our Newport High School rep here. I'd like to give everybody an update on superintendent search. And my update actually is to sort of reinforce some of which you already know. We did site visits to both candidates last week. There were five of us who attended the site visit in Wilmington, five that attended the site visit in Waltham. There were in addition of three people who were able to make the morning visits. I think we found these visits, the site visits, to be very, very informative. I think that we left, I think it's fair to say that we left both site visits feeling that we had two viable candidates, that we had candidates that were very different in their philosophy and very different in their approach, but that, that we did have candidates who we felt could do the job. We have, Steve and I both are writing up reports. Angela, I think, also was on the site visit, to distributing feedback, summaries to everybody. I think you've already gotten mine. We have decided to ask each candidate back for a final interview at a special school committee meeting on March 13th. It is going to start at four o'clock. We will be interviewing Anthony Colonino from 4:00 to 4:45. From 4:45 to 5:15, we encourage members of the public to attend and it's an opportunity to ask questions. We will then be meeting for an interview at 5:30 to 6:15 with Sean Gallagher. And from 6:15 to 6:45, again, another opportunity for a public question and answer with Sean. At 7:00 PM, we will begin discussion and I anticipate that we will be making a decision about the superintendent candidates on the 13th. Anybody have any questions?
Location? Location for those interviews?
It doesn't say, does it? Oh, yeah, for, Newburyport High School, room 118. Thank you.
Old school.
Old school. Anybody have any questions? You may feel free to talk with me if you want, if you need any additional feedback about the feedback that I sent out to you. Please feel free to do that. I think Steve is going to get his out to you as well.
Yeah.
Angela will do the same.
The storm kind of slowed me down this weekend, but I hope to get them out tomorrow.
That would be great. Thank you. It was really, it was, it was, people had some real wonderful things to say about these people. Both of them are, I think, really exceptional human beings, based on the feedback that we got. The question is, what kind of a match do we have for the district? Great. School choice for 2018 and 2019. Angela, is this a conversation that you can help us with? The superintendent is not here because she's sick. I would like to have a vote if we can do that tonight. We have, we began discussion last week about the possibility of opening, opening choice at the high school. It looks like, it looks like we have at least 15 slots. I, I'm not actually sure from my conversation with Kathy Manning, who is, kind of manages our choice, whether we actually have to specify the number of slots we're opening up.
We do.
We do? So...
Number, number of slots and grade level needs to be specified.
So, I think the proposal from the superintendent is?
15 slots at grade nine.
I'll open it up for discussion before we take a motion.
Yeah, I have a question. What is our relationship and our expectation with organizations like Educatus? Because on two fronts, I would almost rather see some spots set aside for Educatus and or Educacious, whatever it is, than for Choice and that we get full tuition from those students. And secondly, they add to our cultural mix at the high school in a very positive way. So, while I recognize that 15 spots for Choice is what is available, would we still have beyond those 15 spots some room to bring in some foreign students to take?
Yes, we would. It is one of the considerations because, you know, I think Susan spoke the last time we were here about meeting with another company about some students that are interested in coming to Newburyport from China. And, you know, we're still in communication with them. That looks very positive. They would also be tuition, students who are tuitioned in, and we told them that we would have availability for five students. So, they're working with us on that as well as the work that we're doing with Educacious. So...
I think that Educacious is identifying upwards of two or three students so far. That's what our experience has been. So, I think part of the reason that you're seeing 15 slots as a recommendation and not 20 or 25 or 30 is to allow some of that flex?
That's, that's what I wanted to confirm by my question, because I do see tremendous value in those programs, whereas Choice is a nice way to fill some additional seats. It's also a very nice way of keeping kids that are, that have moved up together in the charter school, together into their high school years, and so there's some good benefits to that program, in particular at that point in time to offer the Choice opportunity. So I'm encouraged by that.
Can I just ask the process? I guess I wasn't here last week's, or last meeting, so I don't know if that was talked about, but I'm assuming it's a blind lottery?
It's a blind lottery, yes.
Okay. And from time, go ahead.
One thing I was going to add is part of the rationale for opening up Choice is that there have been a number of inquiries already at the ninth grade level.
Yeah, I mean, I get a lot of emails asking about Choice all the time. That was pretty much my only question.
Do we have a motion that specifies?
Can I ask a couple of questions real quick before we... So, in looking at the numbers we have, I guess I'm just curious about our, our thinking process, because, like, there are multiple grade levels. For example, grade five, which currently has 150 students in it, and next year it's going to go to the Mullen, it's going to replace a class with 171 students in it. So it's 21 students short. Or kindergarten, which has 119, and we have 141 moving out of third grade, as opposed to, and in addition to that, 141 going into the Mullen. So like, there seem to be lower numbers in the multiple spots. So I'm curious as to why we're focused so much on the ninth grade.
Right.
Because actually, in ninth grade, by the time they're juniors, we'll be back at the current population.
And secondly, they add to our cultural mix at the high school in a very positive way. So, while I recognize that fifteen spots for Choice is what is available, would we still have beyond those fifteen spots some room to bring in some foreign students to take over?
Yes, we would. It is one of the considerations because, you know, I think Susan spoke the last time we were here about meeting with another company about some students that are interested in coming to Newburyport from China. And, you know, we're still in communication with them. That looks very positive. They would also be tuition, students who are tuitioned in, and we told them that we would have availability for five students. So, they're working with us on that as well as the work that we're doing with Educacious. So...
I think that Educacious is identifying upwards of two or three students so far. That's what our experience has been. So, I, I think part of the reason that you're seeing fifteen slots as a recommendation and not twenty or twenty-five or thirty is to allow some of that flex.
That's, that's what I wanted to confirm by my question. Because I do see tremendous value in those programs, whereas Choice is a nice way to fill some additional seats. It's also a very nice way of keeping kids that are, that have moved up together in the charter school, together into their high school years, and so there's some good benefits to that program, in particular at that point in time to, to offer the Choice opportunity. So, I'm encouraged by that.
Can I just ask the process? I guess I wasn't here last week's, or last meeting, so I don't know if that was talked about, but I'm assuming it's a blind lottery?
It's a blind lottery, yes.
Okay. And from time, go ahead.
One thing I was going to add is part of the rationale for opening up Choice is that there have been a number of inquiries already at the ninth grade level.
Yeah, I mean, I get a lot of emails asking about Choice all the time. That was pretty much my only question.
Do we have a motion that specifies?
Can I ask a couple of questions real quick before we...
Sure.
So, in looking at the numbers we have, I guess I'm just curious about our, our thinking process, because, like, there are multiple grade levels. For example, grade five, which currently has a hundred and fifty students in it, and next year it's going to go to the Mullen, it's going to replace a class with a hundred and seventy-one students in it. So, it's twenty-one students short. Or kindergarten, which has a hundred and nineteen, and we have a hundred and forty-one moving out of third grade, as opposed to, and in addition to that, a hundred and forty-one going into the Mullen. So, like, there seem to be lower numbers in the multiple spots. So, I'm curious as to why we're focused so much on the ninth grade.
Right.
Because actually, in ninth grade, by the time they're juniors, we'll be back at the current population. And if we don't have room for Choice this year, which we said we didn't, I'm not sure why this number will all of a sudden be right for Choice in two years when we're, whereas there are grades, grade levels that are lower.
We would only take them for the one year. David, is that...
Well, no, well, what we said last year is if we give them Choice this year, that they are going to stay with us.
Right, right.
And what I'm saying is two years from now, when the two-hundred-and-two-oh-one that are in sixth and seventh grade now get to the high school, we'll actually have more kids at the high school than we have this year, when we said we didn't have room for Choice students.
Wow.
So, it, it concerns me. You know, I'm saying, I'm just trying to figure out why, like, if that's a concern, I'll, I'll say this, is that a concern for us? And why aren't we also looking at, and the holes I saw were grade five going into grade six and kindergarten going into first grade?
Dave, can you walk me through your math on the high school? Because I don't, I don't...
Sure, well, I sent, I sent the email last night. So, this year we have seven-hundred-and-sixty-six. At least according to the Desi, this is before Kathy sent this out, so I was just going off Desi. And while next year we will have seven-forty-one, and the year after, seven-forty-eight, but by 2020, 2021 school year, we'll be back at seven-sixty-seven. Because if you look at grade six and grade seven right now, there's two-hundred-and-two-oh-one.
Right, I understand that.
So, those numbers will climb back up. And so, if we don't have room for Choice this year, with the same amount of students in three years, are we okay with that?
Well, I think the reason we don't have room for Choice this year is like the current freshman class, grade nine and two-hundred-and-thirteen, is a high bubble.
I understand that, but high school teachers are flexible, as Mr. Parent told us last week. So, whether or not we have, whether it's the freshman class is big or the sophomore class is big, it's the total number of kids in the high school that matters for staffing. So, except for science, I mean, they're...
Right, it's just some...
And that's what, that's what Mr. Parent told us last week, so that's what I'm going off of. And what I'm saying is, in, in two years, we're going to have the same, if not a little bit more, students than we currently have.
I'm looking a little bit less by, by the numbers that Kathy used.
Okay.
That's why I asked the question. Because you're adding, you've got a hundred and seventy-one, and you add fifteen to that.
I'm not even adding fifteen, I'm adding a hundred and seventy-one, two-hundred-and-two-oh-one, and two-thirteen. And those numbers put us above the seven-eighty that we have now.
We have seven-eighty-five right now. So, yeah, it puts us at about the same place we're at now.
About the same, and we, and we, last year, we said, no way, we don't have room for Choice. And now we're saying we definitely have room, not only for fifteen, but maybe some education students as well. So, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, what is it that changed? And then, if we're really interested in Choice, why aren't we looking at two of the grade levels that are significantly lower, the one-fifty and the one-nineteen?
We, Dave, I can, I can't answer the question about grade five, but I can answer the question about kindergarten, because we had the conversation at the last meeting. Part of the reason we're holding on kindergarten is that there are often bumps in registration, bubbles, and we want to make sure that, that, I think, I was talking to Amy when we went to, when we went to the site visit, I think she said that she had just gotten like twenty, it's like twenty kids in the last four days. So, what I had asked for was that as soon as we could get a number that was a reliable number, we would then revisit Choice at kindergarten level. We could also have the conversation about grade five. We don't have to have both of those conversations now, but I'm happy to put them on the agenda, and we can ask about why we're not opening up for five.
And, and I can just say, I'm not positive, I haven't had the discussion with Lisa and about, Lisa and Tim about this, but oftentimes, we have several students who end up coming to the middle school at grade six. So, we have, you know, students who may have gone, say, to the IC previously, and when it gets, when we get to middle school age, when it, grade six, we, it's not unusual for us to have several students enroll for grade six that we're not anticipating sometimes as much as a class worth. So, that could be, I'm, I'm guessing, just based on history, but, but we could certainly ask that question.
Well, you see, the same can happen at the end of eighth grade.
Right, right.
And toward the ninth grade, students who move on to the prep or wherever, other schools, and, and don't come into the high school, so...
I mean, I, I anticipate being able to revisit this about kindergarten, and we can certainly have a conversation about eighth grade. I don't have any problem with that.
And I'm not dying to add more kids, I'm just, well, number one, I want to make, make sure we maintain staff, because our, you know, for better or worse, some of our years, we have, we have bubbles. So, I don't want to be in the habit of dropping a teacher here and trying to pick one up next year, that, I think that's just bad practice, bad for staff, bad for the community. So, I'm not against Choice, I'm just making sure I understand why we're looking at one place, not others. And the other question I had, because this is something else we talked about, because it's an open lottery, we've always been cautious about the potential for incurring, you know, a lot of extra costs, depending on the students who we bring in. And last week, we seemed to now think that it wasn't a worry. Whereas that's something we've definitely talked about the past two years, last week, we're like, oh, it's no problem.
I think it wasn't a worry.
Yeah, no, I thought...
Last week I was told that it wasn't a problem, because we would get the money back and...
For the other school district, yes.
Yes, that's part of the Choice law, that when you get a student that has special needs or require additional combination, additional expenses behind them, that money comes from the same district above the fifty-five hundred, correct?
That, that is correct. However, the part that costs the district is the human, hu, human resource and the time component, that you don't get that back.
Also, like, I'm, for example, I'm thinking if we end up adding to our CO-TALK classes, end up adding, you know, five or six kids who have, you know, IEPs, we might end up having to add a support staff, which becomes more money than we're bringing in for all the Choice students. Which I thought was always the concern. So, I'm just trying to figure out why this year we're less concerned about that we have been in the past.
I don't know that we're less concerned. I think this year we're trying to take a look at any possible revenue sources, because that's where we really saw the deficit, was in the loss of, loss of revenue. And so, we're just opening the conversation a little wider. I don't think the concern is any less, though, Dave.
Okay. That's fair. Thank you.
I have two questions.
Sure.
I think it was Nick that mentioned the charter school kids. Do they, do they usually go from there to the high school, to most of the students in eighth grade?
Some do.
In space we have.
Oh, so they don't automatically get to go to the...
If they're a Newburyport resident, yes.
Okay, yeah. Automatically they go into the high school, okay.
If they want to.
If they want to, right. And the second one was, you know, we bring up a lot, we can't use certain monies, because it's a one-time thing. If we get five thousand dollars and ten of these kids come in the ninth grade, that's two-hundred thousand dollars over the four years, and then it's gone, right? This, that money doesn't kind of get thought of in the same manner, that it's not, it's not a revolving dollar amount? Or, or, or is it, or is it not a problem?
Is this something that you can speak to, the, the...
Well, it can go to certain accounts. And what the, what we, what's been happening is that, because it hasn't been coming in, we really haven't been able to build those accounts up.
Okay, right, yeah.
We've been cleaning those accounts, those...
That's the one that we had, that was large, and now it's almost gone.
Yes, correct.
So, all, all of this goes into that particular...
Correct.
Bucket.
And used for certain things.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that essentially really is the only money that the school district has that isn't tied to restrictions or additional, or have to go in front of the city council. That, that is money that the school district uses at extraordinary expense.
Right.
We have to fix something and build it.
So, that was like five-hundred and something thousand dollars, and it's down to now fifty-nine, or whatever that number was, right?
Okay.
Thanks.
Is the lottery going to announce?
Newspaper.
Yeah, there's a, there's a statutory protocol for it. So, it gets announced in newspaper.
Other public schools recently have had ads in the newspaper. I think Ames, Rehman, Kentucky.
Yeah, I worked for Rockwood the other day, and I had...
Interesting. I'm just wondering if it's a, if it's an access thing.
People are not going to find out about?
Yeah, we're, you're automatically self-selecting people who are either scouring the newspaper for Choice ads, or people who just tend to read, generally tend to read newspapers. Versus if we're advertising through schools and that kind of thing, like, are we sending out flyers to K-eight private schools and saying, hey, we got Choice next year at a public school? Like, do we do active...
Well, I think we could send them out, I'm not sure that they would distribute them.
Yeah.
I, I can say that very often, David, parents who are interested in sending their students to the Newburyport Public Schools call on a regular basis.
Yes, there are.
Asking when, if Choice is going to be open, when we'll know if Choice is open.
I mean, I, like, I've only been on a couple months, and I get those emails.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks. Comfortable putting together, putting the motion forward to open fifteen slots at grade nine?
Second.
No further discussion.
Who made the motion?
Do I, can I make a motion?
Yeah.
I did, I made, I made the motion! No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous to me. This is the first time, I want, I don't know how long, maybe, Steve, since we voted Choice?
It's been a while.
Four or five years, at least.
Yeah, more than that, I think, more than that. Well, we did, didn't we do like a few slots for pre-K a few years ago, but, but before that, it's been quite a while.
Again, we will have the conversation about kindergarten and about grade five before we have to, before the deadline runs out for opening Choice.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
Great. FY nineteen budget update. I don't have, I don't have an update for you, I don't know if you do.
The only thing I can say is that we are working with the rest of the leadership team. I don't think we're ready for an update yet, but we've asked the leadership team to once again comb the budgets that they have submitted in every effort to see what we might be able to do. So, we've had those conversations, that message has gone out to the administrative team, and I think by the next meeting, we should be able to have an update.
I can also just share that we're in the same boat. We're at a, close to five-hundred thousand deficit on the city side in terms of balancing the budgets, so that means overall we're really pulling back on any of those wish lists or any of those increases, and, you know, so it's, it's definitely a tough budget year. There's no question about it. I just wanted to let you know that we're not sitting on a lot of money on the city side either.
And as I, as I said before, the issue is the loss in revenue of non-city revenues. You know, this is not something that, this is not a problem that the city has created for us by not funding the schools. We've lost non-city revenues, and it's very difficult. The superintendent's report is, is quite the teaser. It's a marijuana update, but the superintendent is not here to update us on marijuana, so we'll just have to hold that for the next meeting.
I can't help you with that.
Well, I can tell you that she's been participating on the city's ad hoc meeting. And we've been meeting on a regular basis, trying to, you know, figure out where we're going with this. And there's a meeting with the Business Park people on Wednesday. We had identified a medical marijuana overlay district in the park, which really doesn't provide a viable site. So, we have had several inquiries on a site to do cultivation in the Business Park. So, we're looking at changing, extending the zoning across the other side of the street, so that we could potentially have a cultivation site. We've had a viable company come in who is very interested in developing a cultivation site. They would put about five to seven million dollars into an existing building that's been vacant for three years, which means increased impropriety value, and would also work out, it's somewhere around a million dollars that the city would receive on an annual basis. That money could be targeted towards upgrades to the park, into prevention, and, you know, potentially, you know, money for some other needs in terms of revenue. Lot of concern about retail. If you look at where we are, it's like one-point-eight licenses based on our current existing liquor licenses, and so there's a lot of discussion at this point about where that should be for that, we're rounding down, not up. So, people at Business Park don't want it there, they don't want retail, which makes sense, it's, you know, doesn't seem to belong there, so we're looking at potentially the traffic circle, Route one thirteen, you know, in terms of where there could potentially be one retail site. And again, that would generate additional revenues for the, for the city. So, and because we are going down this path is because we are a community that voted affirmatively for recreational marijuana. And certainly, we could use a piece of the pie in terms of the revenue, so...
The cultivation is for medical marijuana?
Yes. There is potential for that to also be expanded to recreational, but, you know, again, we're moving a little more slowly than other communities, we're asking lots of questions, we're also, you know, looking at things like edibles and packaging and, you know, all, all those kinds of parameters, which, of course, there's been concerns raised about, you know, membership on, on this team, from public safety, from our schools. So, we're trying to move slowly and cautiously in this as we move forward.
Thank you, Vince. The data update.
May I have a question? Maybe just to get you up to the budget, did you say there was a deficit on the city?
On the city side, at this point, too, that's approaching five-hundred thousand dollars. So, we're, we're struggling with the same things on both the school side and the city side in terms of balancing our FY nineteen budget this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, Mayor. I don't know if we can even keep going, but the marijuana, that you mentioned packaging and like, is there a set of rules, like there is, like, when a brewery wants to make a new can, they have to submit that can to be said, it's okay, it's not attracting children and all that stuff? Are the rules similar to that?
The legislature did pass additional legislation in terms of looking at, at that in terms of packaging, so it's not attractive to children. But I think it's still a concern.
Yeah, yeah.
And for animals and, you know, so these are the conversations we're having, but the Cannabis Control Commission has just promulgated their draft regulations. They did ten listening sessions across the Commonwealth. We've been reaching out to legal, we've been reaching out to other, you know, advocacy groups, working through the Mass Municipal Association in terms of getting up to speed on all of these things, but, and we're still not a hundred percent sure in terms of, can we accept some and not all of those? So, if we decide that we don't want gummy bears, can we do that? You know, can we, you know, depending on, you know, who comes in potentially as the retailer, can we structure our contracts so that, you know, about what, what's being sold? So, we're still investigating that area also.
Thanks.
Sure.
Well, I can honestly say it's not a conversation I ever expected to be having at the school committee.
I know.
We have the Assistant Superintendent's report, can I join?
Yes. I wanted to give you an update on how we're doing with the pilot for science resources in grades two through, I mean, in grades K through two. As you know, this will complete the pilots that we've been doing over the last several years in implementing new science resources, K to eight, and we worked backwards. We started in grade eight, and we've worked our way down. So, our, our teachers in the early elementary have been piloting STEM scopes, and we just did, Liz Kinsley met with them last week and did an overview of how things are going. So, they shared the things that they really like about the program, they shared some of their concerns about the program, and, and they came up with some needs. And so, we're going to work through some of those needs. You know, some of the, some of the things that they really liked about the program was that they had, there was an abundant amount of resources for each of the scopes, that they were really engaging, the kids were very interested, it was visual, a lot of hands-on, varied types of learning activities, the lessons were easy to follow, was nice having follow-up activities already created that, you know, that the teachers could go to. The technology is nicely integrated. They have incorporated math into, math and literacy into the scopes, that's what they call each of the kind of units. The kids have, the kids are filled with the supplies that they need, and there's...
an intro overview video that makes teaching from the resources nice. Some of their concerns, many of their concerns were really about the amount of time that we currently dedicate to science instruction in our early grades. And so this particular resource is designed for three hours of science instruction a week. And currently, that would be a stretch for our early elementary teachers to be able to get three hours of instruction in. So one of the things that we want to do is take a look at scheduling and, and talk about the ways that we may be able to integrate into, you certainly can't integrate all of the lab work, but you can integrate some of the more literacy-based components of this into the literacy class, looking where we have crossovers for math, so we've got some work to do there, to see how we might be able to work with and implementation. The teachers are looking to have some time to spend together to really delve in, because in this particular pilot, what we did is we had teachers team up, and they tried one unit, or one scope, so every two teachers tried one scope, and that way we bought the full year of the program, but shared it amongst all the teachers as a way to pilot, so they want to have some time to delve in and get to know some of the other scopes that they didn't pilot, that they weren't assigned to in the pilot. And, um, and they'd like to have some time to really sit and align this to the progress reports that have been built, because we have new science standards, as you know, the program really addresses the new science standards, and so it's, there's some good work that still needs to come out of this, but I think that we'll be doing some release time with the teachers and possibly some summer curriculum work with them around being able to accomplish some of the things that they'd like to see. One of the things that I thought was kind of interesting that came out of it was that the teachers wanted to have time to download and make paper copies of the program, and, you know, we were thinking one of the greatest benefits was that it was all online, and that's new, so that's a shift, so I think maybe some professional development around how we use an online tool that you don't have to have every component of this tool in your hand.
Are they the teacher's guides online too?
They are.
So do the teachers, are they like a PDF file or something like that?
There's a variety, um, the resources come in a variety of, of formats, so some of it is video, some of it's research-based links to different research base. I imagine you could probably download any of it as a PDF, you know, it's all printable.
Okay, if the teachers, I know one problem teachers have with the online stuff is they don't have a way to mark it up or leave a sticky note or that sort of thing, so I don't know if they know how to use like, tools that are out there, if we have bought the, like, PDF markup tools, for example, or if they know how to use different things like that.
That's a really good point, David, I have to look into that, yeah.
Because that's, that is a challenge, like,
It is.
I know, like, I'm, I write in all my materials, and if they're online, you can't.
Yeah.
So depending on how the, I don't know if they allow them. You guys might know, like, I don't know if you've ever worked with online textbooks or something like that. Do they come in PDFs, or do they allow?
Well, typically, you have, I mean, this is what I sell, so, I actually sell against STEM scopes, but, um, yeah, I mean, but I was gonna say, typically, if you talk to your sales rep, I mean, they, they would be a
Right.
a version you could get, probably at no charge.
Right, we just, we haven't gone that far, like, this just happened, so this is all
Right, so if you pilot, you're given a certain amount of skills, they're just supposed to be using, getting familiar with whatever scope they're trying to do, but
Right.
if it gets to the point where you're going to implement it, then that's something I would ask, for sure.
Yes, I think it's been, it's been interesting, because, um, this year in particular with our kindergarten teachers, we had our STEM teacher at the Brezner Hand, who co-taught some of their scopes with them. She was really great, because she was able to be there and help them with some of the tools that maybe they weren't as familiar with. So, we did it that way. And then there was one other thing, if you don't have any more questions about STEM. One other thing I just wanted to fill you on, on was that the, um, high school, New York art trip was this past weekend, so they left on Friday in that in that weather, um, but they had a great trip, so they were gone Friday, Saturday, um, and Sunday, very full days, there were, um, I think twenty-eight students in all that went, but everybody came back really happy, and it was really a successful trip to New York City. Thank you. You're welcome.
Subcommittee reports, Joint Ed, which has been newly named as Ed Committee, the Education Committee, it's no longer Joint Ed, which is kind of disappointing, given our discussion with marijuana. We met today, and we, a lot of our conversation followed a tour that we took at the, of the high school to orient budget and finance from city council and the Education Committee to the, um, the idea that we may be building, or we may be wanting to build new labs, uh, and new classrooms at the high school. We then came back here and continued that conversation. I think it's fair to say that, um, we have experienced a communication breakdown about exactly what, um, what we're doing and how we're doing it. We had asked for a transfer, apparently, to fund a feasibility study. Looks like the feasibility study's actually already been done, which is what we found out tonight. So, um, Ed, Budget and Finance voters tabled the conversation until their next Budget and Finance meeting or their next city council meeting. They hope to have a conversation with the superintendent to sort of get clear what exactly we're asking for, what we need. From talking with Steve Burgholm, who was here, who joined us, we do want to try to get a an SOI into mass building finance, the date for that is April sixth. The delays in looking at the feasibility study funding, Steve said would not affect getting the SOI in. So, that's mostly what we talked about. Finance, anything?
Yeah, we met last on, uh, February twenty-eighth, last Wednesday, just before we went down to do the site visit, so it was an abbreviated meeting, but we did cover some budget transfers. I'll just highlight the, the larger ones, from expense to expense, there was twenty thousand dollars going from current contracted services to, uh, money to support the strategic plan, because, uh, funds were not budgeted for the strategic plan. We also transferred twenty thousand dollars from current contract services to the superintendent's search, as, uh, funds were not budgeted for that as well. Various sources, including the school district, NEF, um, and the city, went toward a twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, computer purchase at the high school for computer updates. Other relative, uh, oh, then there was a series of, uh, transfers related to a long-term plan to replace furniture. Uh, there's a number of pieces of furniture that need to be replaced, uh, in the library, and, uh, so there were several transfers ranging from eight hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars to support that. And finally, uh, we had some transfers from expense to salary to support needed substitutes in our schools, notably for grade four, and to cover a vacant position.
Hey, curriculum?
Curriculum, we met on the twenty-sixth of February, and our discussion revolved around homework, and I thought we had a really good conversation about that being a bigger topic that, that the teachers have been asking about, and how the district is formulating a way to, to bring that to the teachers and have a bigger discussion about that.
Policy, Nick, and maybe you guys, man?
We have, we're meeting on Saturday.
I'll take a, a motion to adjourn to executive session. We will not be coming out for the purpose of contract negotiations. We will not be coming back out and pulling session. So move, David, second?
Second.
You're all called, this is, sorry.
Mr. Callahan?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Fong?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
And Mr. Kitzke?
Yes.